September 15, 2020 at 6:00 PM at the Cottonwood Community Clubhouse. If we could, please have the deputy clerk take the role.
Councilmember Wildon.
Here.
Councilmember Henry.
Here.
Councilmember Holes.
Here.
Councilmember Narin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Matthews.
Here.
Mayor Linsky.
Here.
And Councilmember Howery is absent.
Please stand and join me in the pledge. All right, next is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly known for legal action. Any council members have anything to report this evening?
I do. So earlier this week, actually, it's been, I mean, it's sort of a time warp. It was last week. Many of our city staff, including our city manager and our mayor, councilmember-elect, Karat, and myself attended the meet and greet for the three finalists for the fire chief position. And although I am very sad to see Chief Kirkendall go when he does go, it was interesting to meet and discuss these three finalists, and I appreciated the opportunity to have that. And then also today, our city manager, our mayor and vice mayor and I met with representatives of the Chamber of Commerce. I don't know if either the mayor or vice mayor or city manager plan to update more on that, but it was a discussion about just exploring and furthering the partnership between the city and the council, and had some interesting discussion points today.
Any other council members? No? All right. That sums it up. Yeah, I think, I just want to thank Local First, Arizona, who really helped both the Chamber and Cottonwood leadership kind of, oh, they came together to help assist the conversation between the Chamber and Cottonwood. So we're just looking at how we're going to strengthen our partnership moving forward and keeping in mind, of course, being as business friendly as possible so we can support our area businesses. Mr. Corbin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. The only thing I'll add to that is more meetings to come. We will have some more work to do, and I'm looking forward to those discussions. So I want to start with some sad news. I'm sure most people know, but we will be having funeral services for Commander Jody McCouch beginning 2:00 PM this Friday at Verdi Community Church. Face masks are required, and the church will have social distancing measures in place. Those with underlying health concerns or those that cannot attend may opt to watch online, as the services will be livestreamed and recorded. I believe what I heard today is we're going to do it on the city's Facebook page and PD's Facebook page. It'll be a one-way feed. It won't be the normal interactive Q&amp;A kind of opportunity, but we will have it available. So if you plan to attend in person, please arrive early, as we anticipate significant attendance. Police officers are encouraged to wear their uniforms, as the families have requested a police-themed ceremony in respect of Commander McCouch's lengthy public safety career, to include 20 years of service for the city of Cottonwood. To go along with that, we're going to close city offices around noon on Friday so that city employees can attend the funeral services. The library, recreation center, and transit will be open. We have a staff that can stay behind to man those. Some of our other facilities, community development, already close at noon on Friday, so it's really mostly the admin buildings and those kinds of places that'll close early on Friday. Switching gears, September car cruise is scheduled for Saturday, September 26, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. Cruisers will meet at Main Stage at 5:00 PM and then cruise into Old Town at 6:00. And then I have some great news, based on what Councilmember Henry kind of alluded to earlier. Thank you for everybody who participated in the new fire chief selection process. It was a significant undertaking. We had 41 applications. We phone interviewed 14, invited eight, interviewed four on Thursday, and then interviewed three of those four on Friday. We finished our background checks and made an offer to Ron Sautman from Yavapai County Emergency Operations Team, and he accepted. So he will be joining us as our new fire chief starting in October. So you guys are one of the first groups to know. Wanted to make sure all the council knew at the same time. So I'm very excited about that. He's got over 20 years of experience in the fire service, and he's got about five years' experience, I believe, or more with the emergency operations, which provides him a unique background and a great opportunity, already being from the Verde Valley and staying in the Verde Valley. So we're very excited about that job offer and that accept. So while we will miss Chief Kirkendall greatly, we look forward to what's coming up in the future. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I just want to commend you and your staff, Amanda Wilbur in particular, for putting on a very robust interview process, application process. I know it was a nationwide search to get a chief in to replace Kirkendall, which is not going to be easy, but really wanted to just thank you for that. And the applicants, too, all indicated that it was a great, great process, very transparent, welcoming, and a lot of good, you know, it was a tough choice, I'm sure, but I welcome Ron Sautman.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add, yeah, Amanda, RHR Director, did a fabulous job. Normally, we pay consultants to do the work that she did, and she did not get a bonus. She did put in a lot of extra hours to make it the process it is. I will tell council, thank you for reminding me, Mayor, that we're still searching for a city engineer. So we're back to the drawing board. We interviewed two earlier this week, and I hope I'm not beating Amanda to the punch wherever she's at, but we've decided that we're going to have to continue the search. So I'll update council later about what that might look like, but we've now had two rounds and have been unsuccessful. As a side note, I was in another meeting today with our interim city engineer, Ken, and he is a professional with experience, and he convinced me that that's really what we need. And so, and we, you know, I'm not going to settle. We need that kind of representation for the city of Cottonwood. We need that kind of help. He said it would cost him, we couldn't afford him because he would have to divorce his wife, and so paying the bills. We cannot afford him. I wish he could stay, but he can't. But Cottonwood, the residents and city staff deserve that level of expertise, and so we're going to continue to search for a city engineer.
All right, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to proclamations. We have just one proclamation this evening, and it is declaring the week of September 21 through 25, 2020, as Fall Prevention Awareness Week. So whereas slip and falls impact all ages in Arizona, I think I just messed it up right off the bat here. Excuse me. No, it's just poorly written, I think. Sorry. All right, I'll do my best, folks. I'm so sorry. Is there anyone here to receive this? Am I offending anyone at this moment right now?
The person you're offending, you'll hear from later.
All right. Whereas slip and falls impact all ages in Arizona show resulting in personal and financial tolls that fall injuries exact on those Arizonans 65-plus and healthcare systems, and whereas one in three of all fall victims are more than 80 years of age, and whereas Yavapai County has a third-highest number of age-adjusted fall rate of hospitalizations and fifth-highest mortality rates by county in Arizona, and whereas the high emergency department visit and hospitalization rates among older fallen adults in Arizona, with the cost exceeding $1.9 billion, and whereas falling is not an inevitable result of aging, and whereas older Arizonans at risk of falling need fall prevention programs that can teach them specific everyday strategies to improve mobility and stability and reduce fall risks. Now therefore, I, Tim Linsky, Mayor of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the week of September 21 through 25, 2020 as Fall's Prevention Awareness Week, and apologize for butchering this proclamation as well. So, thank you. Okay, moving on. We have a presentation from the Norris Design Group for the Parks and Rec Master Plan. So I want to welcome you, sir, and I believe the floor is yours.
Mayor, council, I'm Rudy Rodriguez. I'm Deputy City Manager. I'll go ahead and introduce this item and then let Brian and Stacy go from there. Just some quick background. January 2019, NACOG awarded the Community Development Block Grant to the city of Cottonwood for Parks, Recreation, Open Space, and Wayfinding Master Plan, including irrigation design for Riverfront Park and implementation of Phase One of irrigation and wayfinding signs. Norris Design was selected. They've worked with us in the past on several other projects to prepare this particular master plan. Six months ago, they began the process right as we started the COVID pandemic, which made it a little bit difficult for us. However, during those times, they have visited Cottonwood. They have inventoried a lot of our facilities, both as well, both with through Google as well as windshield inspections, meaning drive-bys. We've had numerous meetings, April through June. We had a community questionnaire that many people processed. We also had stakeholder sessions in May, virtual open houses in June, and we met with the Parks and Recreation in late June, in June 23. We also had an open house for the public back in July, and we've had numerous meetings with staff and a lot of our stakeholders, not necessarily virtually, but somewhere in person, especially before the onset of the pandemic. We have both Brian Sager and Stacy Weeks here from Norris Designs. We also have Ken Ballard from Ballard Kings, Ballard King, to support their presentation if needed be. He should be online. Want to go ahead and mention that the project itself started with $359,000 on our Community Development Block Grant, that meaning the Search CDBG program. We currently have approximately $305,000 still available for implementing some of the improvements that are recommended in this particular process plan. Wanted to mention that the plan itself is a picture in time, and some progress has already been made on our irrigation systems since the plan started getting built several months back. So as we were working on the plan itself, staff has been diligently working on some of the projects that we knew were going to be included in the plan itself. So without any further ado, I'd like to have Brian up here and Stacy to back them up.
Thank you, Rudy. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's great to see you again. My name is Brian Sager with Norris Design, and I have the pleasure of being here tonight with Stacy Weeks from Norris Design. Stacy Weeks is our firm-wide park planning specialist, and he's done a lot of this kind of work nationally, and so he's going to be managing most of the presentation tonight, but I just wanted to start out with a greeting and to kind of give some overview and some, as to what we're up to. And, you know, a Parks Master Plan, this is your first Parks Master Plan, and, you know, it's important because it helps guide decision-making. So we're, we as planners are taking objective measures of the existing system, and we are doing community outreach, and we're performing GIS inventory and other inventory, as well as facility inventory, putting it all together into a master plan, which really just helps guide the decision-making of your Parks and Recreation system moving forward for the next, you know, 10, 20, or even 30 years. And I do want to make the point that this isn't just regarding the parks, the physical spaces that you have, but it's a system-wide plan. So it manages to, I mean, it incorporates guidelines for management and your facilities, such as this, but also the recreation center and your aquatics facilities. So that's what, big picture, you know, what we're up to when we're accomplishing a Parks and Recreation Master Plan. It helps guide decision-making. It helps understand what level of service the citizens are already receiving. And then, you know, we ultimately will, are developing a prioritized action plan. There we go. Thank you for that. I have been housebound for six months. I haven't been out, so, you know, it feels good to get out in public. But this is our timeline. We started in spring. As we all know, we had the big hiccup in the spring. So we started with inventory and analysis, and we accomplished a lot of the inventory analysis before the quarantine shut down. And since then, we have been accomplishing our community engagement in questionnaires remotely. And so we have had both an online questionnaire that's received over 300 responses, as well as a couple of different stakeholder meetings where we received input. And through that process, then we've distilled it into a draft master plan, and we've been working with Rudy and his group to understand, you know, how the facilities work. And so as you can see by the blue bar on the right, you know, we're lining up in late summer, where we are at the conclusion. We have a draft. That's what we're up to today to present to you. And then after our presentation, you know, we'll incorporate comments and move towards the final adoption of that plan. And so, you know, big picture, I mentioned it already, but the components that we've accomplished are the community outreach, community questionnaire, which is an online questionnaire, GIS inventory and analysis, a level of service analysis that Stacy can describe a little bit better than I can in a sec. We accomplished benchmarking analysis, which looks at different communities that are peer communities, and how does Cottonwood stack up. Looking at the demographics, both as they exist, but also as they're projected out in the future, programming operations and recommendations in the master plan. So at this point, I'm going to ask Stacy to describe in more detail.
Got to shake it.
Good evening. I'm Stacy Weeks with Norris Design. Thank you for the time to be with you this evening. I wanted to also start out and thank the team, the city's team, and the community for their effort. This was an interesting period of time to go through a master plan, and, you know, we figured out how to pivot and make this work out to really gain some really good community input along the way. So as Brian alluded to, part of what we go through a process is of gathering data to really analyze that data and understand what kind of decisions, both from the data and the community input, drive decisions that will serve as a roadmap for the community as we move forward. Part of that starts with just the demographics. Cottonwood itself is a growing community over the past 10 years, 35% growth. The valley itself has 77,000 people in it. It's amazing the size of it. There it goes. And in addition to that, the tourism that is part of the core economic side of the community, too, Parks and Recreation plays a huge part in that draw. And both it serves the residents, but it also really becomes that regional, national, and international draw for the city. So you're very fortunate to be in the pristine Verde Valley, just a great place for people to be here, recreate, and, you know, spend time getting out there. And as we recover from this period of people being isolated, people are going to come back and be together, and I know you're seeing that right now. Oh, there we go. Well, that works out well, because this is the blow-up. So one of the things that we look at is the overall regional configuration of each city that we work in. And part of the setting, you know, one being in the Verde Valley, but with Coconia National Forest, Dead Horse State Park, is wonderful amenities that surround the community. In addition to that, the existing trail system, and then the parks itself, those being anchored by Riverfront Park, which is really, in essence, Community Park, Regional Park for the area, but the great amenities there between the sports field, skate park, inline skating, disc golf, the open space that's available there with the trail. So good, great amenities that establish that to Old Town Activity Park, which we're in right now, and great assets here. This is a wonderful facility that Ken was really, Ken Ballard, who was involved with the facilities analysis, was really pleased with how you're utilizing this facility to maximize the opportunities here. To the smaller parks like Lions Park and Garrison Park, that really serves a great function being associated to the recreation center and library, all important in serving the community today. The recreation center complex with the outdoor pool and aquatics complex, that's a huge asset to have in the city. And to both have the resident use but non-resident use, that's a great, great, they have a high level of usage in the facility. And through this period of time, we experienced, obviously, no use to the use being able to be back in service over the past month, and it's great to hear that people are excited in returning. And then other opportunities like Cottonwood Kids Park, sports comp, you know, is a sports location, but it's adjacent to Verde Valley Fairgrounds. You know, there's interesting opportunities presented there. And then some of your smaller assets, such as Cottonwood Community Orchard and Bill Bowden Memorial Park. So that's part of understanding what's here today and what opportunities lie in the future. And part of that process is connecting with the community. And as Rudy had mentioned, we had a great opportunity to transition into more of a virtual environment to connect with the community. So one of the objectives that we started the project with was a community questionnaire, which we ended up having really good contact with. We had over 300 people respond with really targeted input. Just to put that in perspective, Oro Valley and outside of Tucson just finished their master plan, and they had about 300 and so people that completed their questionnaire. So good comparison to be able to leverage the data that we have. In addition, we had really positive virtual open houses, just being able to have good dialogue with the attendees there, and then the internal connection with the city's team and also stakeholders that represent key amenities and also programs within the city and the county. So we feel like that was a great opportunity to really connect and get the input that we needed to get an understanding of where the community is and where they're looking to go, and I'll share that in a moment. So just in context, as you all know where we are, but we also like to look way outside of what's just within the city, just to understand what regional providers provide amenities that residents here and non-residents rely on. As you've heard, Clarkdale's working on a recreational complex, which, you know, is good. It adds another asset into the whole valley, why you have a wonderful one with Riverfront Park and the opportunity still to expand there in the future. In addition to that, we look at what we call level of service, and one of the metrics that we are using is what's called a 10-minute walk. This is a national campaign through NRPA, the National Recreation Parks Association, and Urban Land Institute as well, ULI, but it looks at access. What's the real access to park facilities for residents and the community itself to gain access to open areas and recreation? So as you can see, that these are circles that, it's called a heat map. Essentially, the red is where there's a lot of overlap in terms of access to park spaces. So really, the center of town, no surprise, because that's the area where we have quite a bit of park space. That is really an area where there's a great access and equity of park access for the community. Riverfront is a bigger park, so it serves a greater area, so that circle is wider. So a 10-minute walk is about a half-mile walk, just to put it in perspective. But one of the things that we look at this is the gaps. What are the gaps in the community right now? And can some of those gaps be served by future expansion of park or leveraging open space that's there today? And also trails, how do trails fix that connectivity to help give access to more people to get to some of the existing assets you have today? And to layer that in, Cottonwood Ranch is a private asset in terms of a park space, but it plays an important role for the community there. So we dial it down into what would be open fields and turf areas, just to give perspective on how these ultimately serve the community. So this one, you can see that the heat mat is a little less hot, so there's less crossover in terms of where that axis is, but you still cover the core area of the town, but there's definitely the southern portion of town that has needs to open fields and those amenities. And then another version, and there's some more in the document, but is playgrounds. So just the ability for children to get out and play, have that place to grow, entertain, and have some fun. So the core of town is really that area that has those amenities today. So this helps in thinking about where investment in the future, whether it's in existing park or future parks, would be valued as you move forward. As I shared Ken Ballard with Ballard King, he has been involved with the city in the past. He was part of the team that was involved with the study for the recreation center, so he's very in tune with what's going on in the community. Had an opportunity to look in depth at the facilities and programming, provided some terrific recommendations in the document, and that's built on being involved in the community dialogue as well as the input from the questionnaire. So what do we hear from the community? This is a snapshot of some of the parks and facilities that people access and utilize or experience in terms of the entertainment and special events you put on. So obviously, no surprise, Riverfront Park is the choice destination for the community, followed by Garrison Park and Old Town Activity Park, as you put on events here. The recreation center plays a huge piece in this. It is one of the most actively frequented spots. And then, you know, one thing of note is the clubhouse. I imagine this is still an emerging asset for the community, so that number is only going to rise, too, in terms of the use and need for this. And then the events. I know this has been a period where we haven't had an opportunity to host events, but your events are used by the community, and in addition, we had respondents that are non-residents, and the events were popular with non-residents. So part of the community questionnaire is to find out what are priorities from the community. And this is a graph where I'll have you focus on the circles, which are billed on the yellow and red at the bottom, but this is where needs are unmet. They're not completely met, or they're completely unmet. So for instance, on the left, 52% is, 52% of the respondents feel like this is an important priority for them that is not met currently by the community. So the focus on river recreation, natural areas, and hiking and trails really were some of the highlights that came out of what we heard from residents in the community questionnaire and non-residents. And we focused on adults and youth, and I'll touch on youth in a moment. So then we layer that into what is the most important. So this quantifies beyond the distribution there of how many people prioritized these elements. And nature parks with trails rose to the top, the events and festivals, so very important, the special events, what they... to special events, what they mean to the community. And then, once again, river access, and then trails in general. And another component that our team developed is the actual experience people are looking for. And I think, you know, probably if we did this even now, we'd even see the enjoying the outdoors and exercise and health higher than it is there. But important aspects, people want to get out, you got a healthy community that wants to recreate and think about wellness. So on the youth side, both access to the river, water play, and then the play areas were priorities from the folks who responded in getting queries from their youth and what they experience in the community. And what that led to really is what is most important is the outdoor water play. That's something that there's definitely unmet need for right now. The pool plays a big part to that, but having probably in another location, water play would be a destination that the community would really enjoy to see added to the mix. We looked at what are important to the community in terms of actionable items, and this would be kind of the, as you can see here, preserving scenic views and land in the river corridor. So quality of what you have in terms of the assets right now here, the open space, the really the natural terrain, what attracts people here, that's a really important consideration for the community, as well as just continuing to improve the current infrastructure that you have in place today. So what we heard is the river access and the important open space that you have and open space opportunities in the future are really, really of value to the community. So an important question that we always close with in the questionnaires is the question of how much people would be willing to invest in the community for Parks and Recreation and programming. And as you can see here, if you had $100, the primary allocation for that would be to maintain what you have today and improve what you have today. So I think that is what we've continued to hear from what the team has been working towards internally, but that is some of the critical, I guess, what we see as critical assets in the maintenance and the future investment in those spaces today. And then creating connectivity, trails came in there next. So as I highlighted and have talked about, the strong desire is the current maintenance and improvement of what is there today, this wellness. Wellness is such a critical part of Parks and Recreation and programming, what the community and the recreation team does for the community. And then the preservation of the valuable open space and river corridor area that you have within the city and beyond, all important. And then, as Brian will highlight here shortly, is just the opportunity to expand trails, river recreation, and as part of the priorities, talking about some of the initial investment, and as Rudy shared, some of the investment that you see underground, such as irrigation, but critical to the success and quality of the assets that you have today. So once again, from the community, Riverfront and the Cottonwood Rec Center are critical assets, super important to the community. The thought is that some of the parks lack the amenities that people are looking for, as I shared here before, and then really this connectivity. So one other thing that was really critical, as we talked about, is the demand for youth sports and even adult sports for more field space, as the community continues to grow and the leagues continue to grow. So the demand's going to continue to be there and thinking in the future where we can, where you can find opportunities to open up more fields. So as we go through and we continue the build of this process, it's really built on this community input and the data behind it. And what it led us to are three areas of focus. One being this transition to stability, try to get that three times in a row, but the stability is we were in a really interesting time going through this process, as everyone knows. And we saw a transition both from what was going on internal, but also external in the community. So this is already happening, but as the community moves forward and thinks about budgeting opportunities, there's going to be that need to continue to restore the budget and think about the value that Parks and Recreation brings to still meet the community needs that are there today and in the future. The connection part, this is not just about the physical connection, this is about the social connection, helping, you have a great social media platform and communication platform right now, but continuing to reengage with the community, get them involved, both in being able to get involved with events as they start to come back, programming, and even volunteering, but getting that reengagement with the community. And also creating expectations as you come out of this, because as people go to events, they need to understand how these are going to be experienced. And as you shared, Mr. Corbin, that, you know, giving those expectations are really critical as we move forward. And then the reinvestment part, reinvestment is critical into the existing assets that are here today, continuing the trail investment. And then finally, this river park and trail system, part of what we developed in the master plan is a map that guides the short term and some longer-term opportunities that came out of the discussions that we had, both internally and externally, to extend trails, make connections, and then also look at river access points that would complement what's out there today. So when you have a chance to dive in the plan, we broke this down into some higher-level system recommendations, and then we also included a short list of priority projects that are actually physical improvements for the park system, opportunities for both Garrison Park to improve some of the play areas and connection there, Riverfront Park, as we talked about the irrigation opportunities, but also reinvestment in some amenities there. So finding these opportunities where you can make those small incremental improvements that improve the quality of the experience within those parks. On the higher level, continuing to create that connectivity between both the active and passive parks, once again, preserving the corridors, the park and open spaces that you have. We heard a lot about the value of the canopy at Riverfront Park and that adjacency to the river and the experience there, so important assets to keep in mind. And then really, in the future, as you progress through this period of time, is thinking about the strategic opportunities to find new park space, new trail corridors as development occurs, or as opportunities occur with current landholders or other scenarios that you see. But to position yourself to be able to acquire those areas so that you have a network that you can really grow into over time. Now I'm going to have Brian talk a little bit more about the river park and trail master plan.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. So this map describes the park, well, the trails' master plan and the river access point. The river access points are described by the asterisks. I thought we could get in closer, but essentially, it describes existing river access points, but also proposed new access points, because access to the river came through really strong as a priority of the community from the outreach that we heard. And also trails, if you notice, the third funding priority was trails. And so putting it on a map, you know, describing the different trail loops, the trail routes, and then prioritizing those routes, that's what this map describes and shows. And we know that you've already started on some of that trail development, but this puts it in context citywide. The recommendations follow these four different tiers. We have operational recommendations, park recommendations, facility, and program recommendations. And some highlights of each of these include the operational recommendations of leveraging volunteers, and then also operate the Parks and Rec Department at a minimum full-time staff level, and in the future, potentially add a position of Director of Recreation. A couple of recommendations for the parks include Garrison Park, expanding the play area, add some shade canopy, seat walls, repaint and refresh the play structure. At Garrison Park, it's a family-friendly park that people like to attend, and so that would be a good reinvestment opportunity, as well as at Cottonwood Kids Park, add benches and other amenities around the soccer fields, update the irrigation system there, and improve lighting so that you can have more longer-term use of that, of those fields. Regarding facilities, our recommendations, these are high-level, of course, the documents got more detail, but develop basic priorities for each facility, including priorities for each space in the Recreation Center, and determine programs and services to support these spaces, and the role of rentals. And then finally, consider moving the youth center functions to the Recreation Center's Community Events Hall, and given its relatively low usage and the availability of the community clubhouse for events, longer-term, consider locating a new youth center on the same campus as Recreation and Aquatics Center with access to Garrison Park. So that begins to consolidate more of a campus scenario. And then finally, the fourth tier is program recommendations. Our high-level recommendations are to ensure that programming responds to the demographics of Cottonwood and the Verde Valley, and that all age groups are adequately covered. So we know that you've got a growing community, there's youth in the community, they need to be served, as well as the, you know, the other age brackets throughout there. And then finally, the department, the city doesn't have to be the actual provider of all the recreation programs and services, but look for opportunities, as Stacy mentioned, to partner and to leverage these partnerships with either nearby, you know, developments or other agencies and other opportunities. Then therefore, the department can operate as a clearinghouse for these programs and services, either provided internally or by others, as I said. And one last component that we need to touch on is the master plan signage and wayfinding plan. So a component of this entire process was the signage plan. And signage is important, as you know, because it makes people feel like they are in a place. And gateway signage makes people feel welcomed when they're in, and it provides a sense of place. And wayfinding signage helps people move around the community and helps them, you know, feel more comfortable. As you saw on an earlier slide, 50% of your tourism is vehicular traffic that comes up from the valley. And so these people, if they're not familiar with Cottonwood, they are, would be put at ease by more wayfinding and gateway signage. And so we looked at the existing monumentation, the typology of that signs, and then we developed this overall map showing in yellow the existing gateway signs, and then in orange, the proposed gateway signs. And then in yellow, dots are existing wayfinding signs, and the orange are proposed wayfinding. So this, we're layering in new, and then also we are bringing in proposed sign typologies, which will help kind of unify the signage message, right? So right now, you've got gateway signs, but they kind of are different designs. And that's great, there's a lot of character there, but as you move towards, you know, implementing new signs, you can move towards more of a standardized system so that people feel more unified. The top sign shows wayfinding, and it's got, you know, room on that sign panel for three to four different attractions. And then the bottom one is a gateway, and you can see the scale figure of the person standing, so that sign is, you know, roughly eight feet tall by 14 feet wide, and that's just kind of a standard gateway sign that draws on the materials. You know these materials well, it's river rock, you know, it's honoring some of the architectural character of the city, but it also brings in a touch of modern with the punched-out lettering and the weathering steel paneling. So that is basically, that is our discussion on the signage and wayfinding. We recognize you're going to be developing signs in the future, so we're presenting a standard design. And in a sense, this is a summary of our entire presentation. Stacy ran us through the public outreach process, and we talked about recommendations, and then now we're at the signs. So we did want to take a moment and specifically thank everybody who participated in our online questionnaire. We want to thank the citizens and the stakeholders and the city staff and the public officials who participated in the process, who lent your energy and lent your ideas and lent your expertise to this ongoing process. It's not just something we did, it's a unified effort. So thank everybody for who participated, and thank you for your attention tonight.
Thank you very much. And, you know, we've had a long relationship with Norris. You guys have done some great design work for us in the past, and we really appreciate it. And I know this is Councilmember Hulse's hopefully dream come true. I know you've served over 20 years on Parks and Rec, and I know you've really been anticipating a master plan for a number of years now, so I'm excited that we're making forward progress.
Like a nice plan, look forward to seeing it completed.
Thank you. And if anyone else has any questions, we're available, and if there's any questions that you have following, definitely can work with Rudy, and we can coordinate from there.
Great. Any questions at all? No, thanks for your hard work too through COVID. I know that was a bit unexpected. And your ability still to get 300 respondents to that, I think, is a great measure to the quality of your work and outreach, so thank you.
Thank you all for your willingness to work through this process too. It was great that everyone tried to figure out creative ways to navigate this, so we thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez, how much money did you say we have left over to actually implement some of this?
About $305,000 is about what we have currently. We, we're looking to look, start working on probably the second part, half of it, and that'll be mostly our wayfinding signs. A lot of our maintenance projects, as you know, fell by the wayside during the down economy. We had, you know, revenue generation issues, so we're trying to catch up on some of those. David Hossman and Mark have done a great job trying to keep up with those projects. We've got Jack chomping at the bit to start getting some programming done, but in the meantime, he's done some, made some changes over at the Recreation Center, helped contain our costs, which is be helpful in the long run. And we've got a lot of other things, our Economic Development Director, Tricia, and Leah have been working to try to, you know, they've got canned marketing ready to go as soon as we're open for business, a little bit more open for business. So we've got a lot of great things happening, this is just one of them, and it's going to help us, guide us into the future for a lot of our parks and our wayfinding signs and a lot of other things for the facilities.
All right.
Well, and remember, we have allotted some money from the gaming, from the tribe that we got, for Garrison Park. So part of the supplies are in, so we'll be installing, we, not me, them. We'll be installing a mommy and me swing, and we've done, redone the base. So we, as they alluded to, we've started on a lot of this already, and I'm very excited about that mommy and me swing and the new base, and we'll just keep working on it as we have opportunity.
And just one more point, the Riverfront Trail that we've been working on is on a drawing board, is just about complete, ready to go out for a bid, and we've got about $130,000 available through a couple of sponsorship grants between the City of Cottonwood and this EDC.
Right, well, that's super. I think just having a plan is a big step forward as well. We can certainly leverage our partnerships through the Verde Front and other organizations to try to get some of these things off the ground, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
All right. Okay, next on the agenda then is approval of minutes of the regular meeting of September 1st, 2020, and I would motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion, Councilmember Henry seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved. We move on then to unfinished business. We have just one item tonight under unfinished business, it's ordinance number 685, amending Title 8 Health and Safety of the Municipal Code by deleting Chapter 8.12 Nuisance Abatement in its entirety and adding a new Chapter 8.12 Nuisance Abatement. This is the second and final reading.
So Mr. Mayor, Scott is available if you have questions. We only received one comment, almost. It ended up being about something else and irrelevant, but I thought for once we were going to, you know, be able to give you some other feedback, but no, not the case. So we didn't receive any input from anybody, and so unless you have questions, nothing changed.
Any questions from Council for Mr. Ellis or Corbin? Okay, I think, again, we went over this at great length, and it seems like you got full Council support on this, so I would go ahead and entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number 685.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Narin made the motion, and Vice Mayor seconded it. If we could please have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Very good. Please read ordinance number 685 by title only.
An ordinance, ordinance number 685, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Title 8 Health and Safety of the Municipal Code by deleting Chapter 8.12. municipal code by deleting chapter 8.12 nuisance abatement in its entirety and adding a new chapter 8.12 nuisance abatement. Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, and thanks again for your hard work on this staff. All right, consent agenda is up next. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council. They will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda. So we have five items tonight on the consent agenda. I'll read them out loud. If anyone would like an item pooled, please indicate so. Item one, consent of assignment of tenant rights for Lot 125 of Cottonwood Air Park from Cortez Aviation LLC to KP Hangars LLC. Item two is acceptance of a micro grant from FEMA to purchase personal protective equipment for the Cottonwood Fire Medical Department. Item three, adoption of updated Title VI Civil Rights Act of 1964 implementation plan for the Cottonwood Area Transit System. Item four, addendum number one to the fiscal year 2019-2020 intergovernmental agreement with the Yavapai Flood Control District. Item five is proposal from Dibble Engineering for Post-Design Construction Administration Services for the rehabilitation of sewer lift station number four. Any items that a council member would like pooled or member of the public? All right, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion, Councilmember Wildon seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's approved. And now we go into new business, and there's six items tonight on new business. Following items are for council discussion, consideration, possible legal action. First item this evening is discussion and award of fiscal year 2020 to 2021 outside community agency grant funding. Mr. Corbin.
No, where's he at? There he is. I'm going to turn this over to Jeff.
Evening, Mr. Cook.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Jeff Cook, the Contract and Purchasing Administrator for the city of Cottonwood. Tonight I'll be presenting on the fiscal year 2021 outside agency funding program. And if I can get this clicker to work. So just an overview of tonight's presentation. First, we'll touch on last year's process and council's previous direction. We'll go over the scoring criteria development, the proposals received, the review committee recommendations, and a summary of the programs funded by those recommendations. And so for last year, and guided by city council directions, staff implemented a new competitive process for nonprofit organizations to apply for funding from the city on an annual basis. And as a result of this process, we awarded funding to eight nonprofit entities through the program, which we were able to hear present on their accomplishments and successes at the work session last week. And so because we felt that that was a success last year, we kept the scoring criteria the same. And one of the, the number one on the top there is the applicant's ability to document and state a community need. And then they're also able to describe how they can align a program or a service to meet that need. And we allocate significant weight to their ability to align with one of the key focus areas of the council's strategic plan. And then the highest weight is for developmental efforts in identifying a proposed project or program to meet those needs. And for this year, we received 16 applications as opposed to 13 last year. I believe staff feels that this is an indication that it's a thriving program, that it's growing, we're fostering competition, which we believe is one of the goals of this program. So that's, that's a positive. But the one thing to note here is that we received over $320,000 in grant funding requests, and the program budget's only $100,000, so a significant gap in funding requested versus the amount of money available. I do have a side note there that one entity did not apply for a specific dollar value, but asked that the city waive utility fees at a facility. And so once the proposals were received, they're distributed to the evaluation committee and reviewed individually. We then roll those scores up to a cumulative sheet, which is a little tough to read here, but it results in a ranking of highest scoring to lowest, top to bottom there. And while that's up on the screen, I'm going to go through the recommendations for this year, and we'll just start with, at the top and work our way down. Rank number one was the Verde Valley Cyclists, whose proposed program would result in the construction of seven miles of new trails and two miles of social trail adoption within the blowout wash trail system. Now, this is like phase two of a larger project, a three-year project, and the city-awarded funds are going to be matched. The Verde Valley Cyclists have raised over $150,000 to date for the project, and the Forest Service has committed just under $10,000. The funding requested was $7,850, and that is tonight's recommendation for award. Rank number two was Manzanita Outreach, whose proposed program would solidify and expand food sharing and community events through 27 large-scale food sharing events in the And I believe, as we listened to Mr. Newcomb last week, they achieved this primarily through their distribution and availability. And within their proposal, excuse me, they, they planned to share over a million pounds of food with Cotton, Cottonwood residents. Rank number, sorry, moving too fast here. So the funding requested through that program was $14,288, and tonight's recommendation is $14,150. Rank number three was the Verde Valley Wine Consortium, whose proposed program was to purchase auxiliary equipment for the event trailer, which was purchased last year through this program with city funding, but also to market the launching of the Verde Valley American Viticulture Area. And so tonight's funding recommendation, the request was for $14,080. Tonight's recommendation is for $7,000, which the group wanted to earmark for the marketing of the AVA designation in the Verde Valley. Rank number four was Verde Valley Wheel Fund, which is a group that's got a proposed program that would allow them to expand a mountain bike club to middle school students at Mountain View Prep. The request was for nine new mountain bikes and equipment. They're currently fundraising to create a skills park at MVP School to avoid the need to travel. And they currently offer six programs that serve a diverse community of the Verde Valley youth at no cost. An example of this is that all Cottonwood Oak Creek schools participate in Verde Valley Bike for Kids. The funding requested through this program was $8,235. Tonight's recommendation is for $4,000, which would cover about half of the equipment that they're requesting. Rank number five was the Old Town Mission. The funding award would be utilized to maintain the programs and services currently offered, as well as covering an anticipated additional increase in clientele over the next year. As we know, the Old Town Mission provides basic needs for those who are at or below the poverty level. They have events such as Operation Back to School, the Great Turkey Giveaway. Their funding requested was $30,000, and tonight's recommendation is $10,000. Rank number six is Subs to Recovery Homes, who provides assistance to clients that have lost everything as a result of substance abuse. The focus of this group is to develop life-transforming habits that help individuals become responsible members of our community. And the proposed job development program would provide training to a minimum of 40 clients with job development skills and job acquisition skills by September of 2021. $15,000 was requested for this program, and tonight's recommendation is $10,000. Rank number seven was the Old Town Association. This organization has a purpose to promote and develop and enrich Cottonwood's historic Old Town District. The funding request would have been used for strategic marketing, promotion of Old Town, Old Town events, business advocacy, and economic development. As we know, they, they provide, they're integral in the Safe Night Event on Halloween, Walking on Main Chocolate Walk, Farmers Market, the Rat Rod, they assist with Thunder Valley Rally and do a lot of things, and are integral with that. The request for funding was $20,000, and tonight's recommendation is $3,500. Rank number eight was the Science Vortex of the Verde Valley, which is an organization that strives to create an environment where children are drawn into a vortex of play, perseverance, collaboration, and innovation. The funding request was to provide two complimentary weekly programs to local families that are STEAM-based, that's the science, technology, engineering, art, and math. One was for a Makerspace Monday, which would be open Monday evenings for children's, children and parents to create, collaborate, and share ideas with readily available modern technology and materials. Another program was Toddler Steam Time, which would occur every Monday morning for exploration, play, storytime, and demonstrations with parents and their toddlers. The funding amount requested was $11,240, and tonight's recommendation is $5,000. And as an example, this amount would be sufficient to fund toddler time for one year. Rank number nine was Friends of the Verde River. The proposed program presented by the Friends was a BioBlitz, who would work with Cottonwood Oak Creek School Districts and the Science Vortex to engage local students in collecting and analyzing data about local plants, animals, and insects. The primary goal would be to connect students with nature in a, in a social context using smartphone apps. So the app would allow students to record observations, help them with identification, connect them with experts, and engage them in a fun way to explore local habitats while collecting data on plants, animals, and insects. The funding requested was $10,000, and tonight's recommendation is $3,500 in support of that And rank number 10 is the Verde Valley Senior Center. They offer the Meals on Wheels program for homebound senior citizens, and their program provides seniors with one-third of the daily recommended intake of calories, protein, vitamins, and minerals five days per week throughout the year. Over 40% of all Meals on Wheels are delivered in the city of Cottonwood, and over 83,000 hot meals were served or delivered last year throughout the Verde Valley. The funding requested was $60,000, and tonight's recommendation is $35,000. And I believe one thing that I missed and I wanted to cover was that after the cumulative scores come together, that's at the point when we bring the evaluation committee together and sit down and discuss and really hash out what funding levels we feel are appropriate. And so those are where the difficult discussions really take place, and not everyone's favorite floats to the top, but we trust in the process of scoring them individually. And I feel strongly that the group can unanimously bring this forward to the council, hoping that we carry out the direction that was given to us. So a summary of these programs funded, it's going to allow the city to fund 10 of 16 applicants, which is two additional from last year. And these recommendations provide support to a diverse and wide range of needs amongst the residents of the city of Cottonwood. Ideally, there's a lot of, a lot of difficult decisions made, and I know that staff and this council would love to award money to all these great programs, but I just want to conclude before questions saying that I'm proud to be part of a city that supports all these local organizations and the great things that they're doing. And we learned a lot of great things in going through these applications, so it's encouraging to see all the good things that are going on. I would encourage anybody who was not recommended for funding tonight to continue to apply. In no way does this mean it was a bad proposal, or that we were upset or anything like that. It's just, the reality is, there's $320,000 in requests and $100,000 to spread as far as we can amongst these groups. That, I'll open up for comments or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Any questions from council for Jeff or Ron?
One question for me. How many people were involved in this process?
There were six on the evaluation committee.
Okay, and what, who, what types of people? Not specifics, but who?
Senior staff-level employees of the city.
Okay.
Myself.
Well, I want to say, it was great to have the applicants that received the grant from last year come in and present to council. I think that was helpful to see, you know, how this program is, is working. And historically, you know, we haven't funded these agencies to the same level as what we've done now. I think council upped the amount to $100,000. We've, we've kept it at that amount even through COVID, which I think is commendable. We certainly could have used that money elsewhere, but we wanted to keep this program in place. And we've opened up a can of worms. I think it's a, it's a great program. People know it's a good program, and so we have a lot more applicants than we've ever had in the past. We've never funded as many organizations as this in the past, which is a good thing, because certainly the, you know, the money's being spread further, and which I think helps us achieve some of our strategic goals that we wouldn't otherwise be able to just as a city. We do rely on our, on our hard work in nonprofits and, and other organizations to make that happen for us, so. But like you said earlier today, on one of our weekly phone calls, Ron, you've managed to just make everybody mad through, through this, through this process. And that's really the unfortunate part of it, is there's simply no, no way to make everybody happy. I know that, you know, my, my pet projects or my pet favorites didn't rise to the top of the list, and I think it's the same across the board with the council. But I do, I do believe in the process. I think it's, I'm proud that this council's put this process together. We are coming into our strategic planning retreat this December, so I think, you know, I have some feedback from some of the presentations that we received that I think could help make this process better. And I think the other thing that, and Vice Mayor and I spoke about this a little bit, is that we are viewing this now through the lens of, of COVID. And I think that's put a little bit more emphasis, at least in my mind, on, on funding programs that, you know, maybe help folks that have really been hit harder, which wasn't your directive at the beginning of all this, and it wasn't your directive last year either. I think you followed your, your direction very well. But moving forward, as, as we evaluate this program, I think we may need to consider those things and how we, how we, if we want to make any changes at all to this program or not. That's all I have.
That's one of the things that I'm, I don't, wouldn't say concern, but is there any way to make this process better?
Absolutely, always. I think so.
I think, and we need to address that, because I, I don't know that it's, you get six people making a decision. It comes to council, and we don't know the ins and outs of all this typically. So we've just got to say yea or nay, and I don't necessarily feel comfortable with that.
Okay. And the city manager has alluded to the fact that this might be an item for discussion at this, why am I losing the word?
At the retreat. So, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Wildon, we've talked about that. This is something that needs to, so several of you or a couple of you were not in the retreat a few years ago and, and through the process when this was created, or the strategic plan. So we think that's a great place. The real role we're hoping from is, is clear direction. So if there's a bigger priority, as Mayor alluded to, maybe helping those in need versus implementing economic development or trail development, we, you can set those priorities for us, and that will help us set the point system. So that's really where it comes in there. I do get questions periodically about having members of the community on the evaluation team. We really try hard, because everybody's got their favorite. And so we really try to keep all of that out, because if I was trying to make my bosses happy, I would have had a different answer than, than what we presented tonight. We really did try to stick with what we thought the priorities were based on previous instructions we've been given. So I, so back long-winded, I guess, is we hope to have this discussion in detail at the retreat. And, and I think we can do a pretty good job of implementing direction, but, but I think that's the best time for that.
Right. Thank you.
And the other thing I was adding, if we wanted to add more money for next year, we set this money aside early in the budget process and we're able to maintain it. So if there's a desire from council to increase the funding to this program, clearly there's a need, then we can, you know, if that's direction from council, we can look at that next year also. At the retreat, and then we'll build it in. Kirsten's in the back, we can build that into the, to the budget process early in the process next year.
Vice Mayor, yes?
Okay, I, I did talk to the mayor and to the manager about this, and personally, I'm just a little disappointed in what I'm seeing here, and it's not a reflection on staff or the decision they made. I understand the parameters you're working under, so it might be my misconceptions as to what this program should look like, maybe. So I do look forward to... So I do look forward to the retreat and getting together and kind of talking about this amongst the council and staff on how maybe we can make it look better, improve it, expand it. So I just wanted to go on record with that. Not going to stand in the way of it.
Any other comments from council, or questions, concerns? Thank you, sir. All right, then, if there's no further discussion, then I would go ahead and move to approve the following funding amounts for fiscal year 2021 outside agency funding program, subject to approval of the final form of the respective funding agreements by the city attorney. So I'll go down the list. $7,850 to Verde Valley Cyclists, $14,150 to Mans Need to Outreach, $7,000 to Verde Valley Wine Consortium, $4,000 to Verde Valley Wheel Fund, $10,000 to Old Town Mission, $10,000 to Steps to Recovery, $3,500 to Old Town Association, $5,000 to the Science Vortex of Verde Valley, $3,500 to Friends of the Verde River, $35,000 to the Verde Valley Senior Center.
Second?
Okay, Mayor, may the motion, Councilmember Hulse, second it. If we could, please have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. And thanks again to everyone who applied. Thanks for all the good work that the last year's applicants did on behalf of the city, and look forward to seeing the progress that the, the new recipients do on behalf of the city. And also look forward to our discussion at the retreat, to see how we can further this program. All right? Okay, next, under New Businesses, Resolution Number 3070, declaring the 2012 to 2014 amendments to the tax code of the city of Cottonwood to be a public record.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Kirsten Lennon, the Financial Services Director. So tonight, we have in front of you two items. First is the Resolution Number 3070, and that declares the 2012 to 2014 amendments to the model city tax code as a public record. We did put a notice out on our website a couple weeks ago that this would be brought to council within 60 days. You have the amendments in your packet. It is just an update to some language that was done by the Municipal Tax Code Commission, and we need to adopt this to keep it up to date with what the rest of the state has as their model city tax code.
All right, I'll go ahead, then. We'll discuss this further in the next item, but I'll go ahead and move that we approve Resolution Number 3070.
Second?
Okay, Mayor, may the motion, Councilmember Wildon, second it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry? Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes.
And motion carried.
All right, please read Resolution Number 3070 by title only.
Resolution Number 3070, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, declaring as a public record that certain documents filed with a city clerk and entitled the 2012-2014 amendments to the tax code of the city of Cottonwood. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, next is Ordinance Number 686, adopting the 2012-2014 amendments to the tax code of the city of Cottonwood by reference, establishing effective dates and providing for severability and penalties for violations. First reading.
So this is the first reading of the ordinance to adopt the model city tax code changes for 2012 to 2014. There's 18 amendments that were in the packet that list out what exactly was changed. Again, this was voted on and decided by the Municipal Tax Code Commission. They put it forth, they write the document, they send it to us, and we need to adopt it to be in compliance. We were also told that we will have another amendment within a couple of months, which will get us up to 2018. So at least it'll be, you know, we'll be a little closer.
All right. Any questions from council?
I do have a question about the delay. We're looking at tax code amendments that have been in place for years, and I don't know that our city manager enjoys spending his morning on, you know, text messages from me. So the, the commission votes on and writes the code and then sends it out to the city.
So we really have no control over when those are finalized, because they're done by the commission and then sent out uniformly to all the cities. So all the cities are adopting this 2012-2014 tax code currently.
Who can Councilmember Henry text early in the morning to express her frustrations?
Mr. Mayor, she can always text me, but we have the same frustrations, where it's very embarrassing to bring something that old to council to approve, that especially is, since it has no net change effect to the city, doesn't change our tax rate, doesn't change what we tax, it doesn't change the way we do business. This is just getting in compliance. So I actually agree with Councilmember Henry that this is beyond acceptable in a delay, but we have no control.
How often do they do this?
Well, they haven't done this one since 2011, and now we're doing this now, and then we'll be doing another. But they do meet all the time, and it's updated. The code is actually updated annually as they vote on things. It's just that they don't rewrite the whole entire document every time, so.
But just to make sure we're clear, what I think I'm hearing you say is that the reason for the delay is because the commission just recently sent it out to the city.
Yes, I got it maybe four, three, four weeks ago and got it on the agenda as soon as I could.
All right. Well, if there's nothing else, this is just the first reading, so we'll bring it back for the second and final.
And I do want to say thank you to, to our city manager, deputy city manager, and Ms. Lennon, because they were very responsive on a weekend, and I, I do appreciate that, so thank you. I might see the T for tax word. You know, I'm on my own.
And we, we appreciate that about you. All right, so let's have Deputy Clerk then read Ordinance Number 686 by title only.
Ordinance Number 686, an ordinance of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, amending, relating to the transaction privilege tax, adopting the 2012-2014 amendments to the tax code of the city of Cottonwood by reference, establishing effective dates provided for, providing for severability and providing penalties for violations. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Item 4. This is a proposed reduction of speed limit on Main Street in Old Town from Willard Street to Cactus Street.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers are, while our city interim city engineer comes up, if you want to twist his arm some more, feel free. I'd love for him to stay. But as you can see, we have changed the way Old Town flows. Thank you to David and team, and, and Robert did a lot of the designing before he left, and it was stamped. It has a purpose, the design of slowing traffic, making it safer for biking, and to slow traffic down. One of the most numerous complaints I get on speeding at my desk is in Old Town. And so this is just adding to the safe flow of traffic through there, but Ken's going to give you a little better update.
Thank you, Ron. Mayor, members of council, we have been looking at this since I came to work a little over three months ago, here on an interim basis, to, to help out a little bit as, as the interim city engineer. One of the things came up with the road diet program, particularly looking in the area here in Old Town, where we're narrowing the streets, we were doing a number of things there that we felt needed to have something done as far as the speed limit was concerned. So after looking at a number of, of different factors, discussing it on several different occasions, and talking about the diagonal speed, the diagonal parking, and the increased activity in Old Town, we felt it was appropriate to look at lowering the speed limit. We also talked to him, got the police chief involved in it, who supported it, and we decided to move ahead with that. Now, that being said, there was, there's a note in there that part of the job of responsibility of the city engineer is also as a traffic engineer, as far as doing signage for traffic in the city. We had that discussion, and they were looking, a lot of people looking at me, okay, you're the city engineer, go set up the traffic, the speed limit. I said, well, I didn't think that it would be appropriate just for the city engineer, whether it be me or any city engineer, to set the traffic up without, as a sole person and having sole responsibility for that. So we're bringing it forward to the council tonight and asking for your approval of the change in that speed limit, so that we can document that the council had the support of making that change.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just add, we did canvass the Old Town Association, and they were supportive of it as long as it was from bridge to bridge, which is what our recommendation is.
Correct.
Any discussion, council?
Well, I think this has to be part of a bigger analysis. It's, I don't know that it's just the speed limit or the speed limit signage. We also have to have enforcement, because I know there are times when our current speed limit is not enforced in Old Town. We also, I have safety concerns as far as the, each intersection in Old Town, when we have folks that are parking, you can't, you can't pull into or onto Main Street safely, and again, without enforcement of the speed limit, whether it's 15 or 25, that's still going to remain a hazard for pedestrians and vehicles alike. I think that's also been exacerbated with the, although I'm a fan of additional parking, I've been harping on parking, especially in Old Town, for years. But if we don't have enforcement of the speed limit, when we're backing out to pull back out onto Main Street, we're still going to have that liability concern for pedestrians and, and other vehicles as well. So to me, I think we need to look at it as a concerted effort, including that enforcement piece, not just signage and/or reducing the speed limit.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Henry, we, we agree. The police chief's aware of need for increased enforcement. One of the other concerns brought to our attention was Cactus Street, because it's not easy, but of course, it would be easy for someone trying to avoid Old Town or the 15 mile an hour zone. So we plan to study that, also keep an eye on that. We'll do some speed studies there, traffic studies there, to make sure that we haven't just moved the, the high speed to, to a neighborhood. So we are taking holistic approach. We know that enforcement, the speed limit won't matter if we don't enforce it, so we're aware of that, and the police chief's on board, and, and we'll do what we can to, to get those speeds down. The one thing that we didn't talk about, that it was a previous project, is the sidewalk on Main Street over there by the Hippie Porium. That has started to slow traffic down once that's finished. The narrowing of the road there was pretty significant, and we think that'll slow traffic coming into the curve on that end, the diagonal parking, the narrowing of the land on this. We think it'll naturally slow at both ends, by, based on the engineering and the work done. And then we just got to have chief put some people down there, and we'll see what we can do to help enforce that. But we agree, and we know that a speed limit doesn't work if we don't have enforcement.
I want to thank you, Councilmember Henry, for bringing that up. I, I agree with you wholeheartedly. I think enforcement's critical. I think we all know to do the speed limit when we go into Clarkdale, because, because we've all gotten a ticket going in.
No, we haven't. No. Not all.
You know, speaking from, no, I have died, but, but I know a lot of people that have. But enforcement's a big, a big part of it, and I think that we've looked at that intersection a lot over the years, and we had discussions of a roundabout, and a median, and all other kind of things to slow traffic down coming in. But the easiest thing I think we could do, hopefully, would just be enforce the speed limit. And it's discouraging when we invite tourists to come to our community and spend their money here, and then we scare the heck out of them with cars speeding around the corner there at Bashi, and they're racing to find safety and shelter. It's unfortunate to see that, and for our residents as well, so. But I am supportive of the 15 mile an hour. I think effectively, that's how fast you can safely go in Old Town these days.
I'm glad to hear that there are some traffic calming events occurring at the curve, and then as we're coming in from Willard, because my concern would be the same as Councilmember Henry. Today, you walk out there, you're taking your life in your hands, as we know from council meetings and the speeders that were going by, and that's 25. Now, instead of being able to pull directly into traffic, we have to back out and then pull into traffic. The more calming we can create to cause traffic to naturally slow down, the better off we're going to be. I'm not sure if there's more. I'll leave that up to you. If there are any more calming effects that could be placed in Old Town to, to cause traffic to slow down, not speed bumps, they don't work.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hulse, thank you for that. I think what I just heard, Mr. Interim City Engineer, is you guys need to stay around a little longer and help us devise some more of those calming techniques, so thank you. I'll pay you later, Councilmember Hulse. We're, we're going to continue to look at those. We're not actually finished. David, I don't think we finished the crosswalks yet, so there's still a little more painting to do that I think will add some visual effect of the slowing also. And then we also still have some drainage issues down on the other end by Bashi that we have to work on. So there's still more opportunities to add some more measures to help slow traffic down. So we're not done with Main Street. I think after talking to our Public Works Director there, long-term, we need to look at redoing Main Street, but there's a couple other roads that are a higher priority. But I think in the long-term, you'll see in the next five to 10 years, us asking to redo Main Street, and where we'll be, you know, doing more to, to add to calming to it, but it's expensive. It'll be a rebuild, I'm guessing, for Main Street, so it'll, it'll be very expensive, so we'll have to plan that accordingly, but I think there's more to come.
Thank you.
All right, how would you like to move forward, then, council?
I move to establish a new reduced speed limit of 15 miles per hour on Main Street in Old Town between Willard Street and Cactus Street.
Second?
All right, Councilmember Narin made the motion, and the Vice Mayor seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes.
And motion carried.
Good, thank you. Thanks for your work on this. All right, next is Ordinance Number Nine, or excuse me, Ordinance Number 684, adding Chapter 1.10 general penalty to the Cottonwood Municipal Code. This is the first reading.
Mayor, council, as you know, we, we undertook a few years ago, we started undertaking the, the process of updating the municipal code. And as we got into Chapter 1, and getting rid of archaic provisions and, and updating those that were going to remain, somehow during one of those transitional processes, we, we dropped off a series of sections, actually a, a large number of sections. Part of what we jettisoned was a general penalty provision that makes, it's not the only enforcement mechanism under city law, there are different things that make, for example, the uniform codes subject to prosecution and other enforcement. But this particular provision sort of is a catch-all and allows the city code provisions that don't otherwise have a penalty and enforcement attached to them or referenced by them to be enforced. So the, the city prosecutor came to us some time ago and asked that we, we restore this. We, we started down the path of trying to figure out exactly what we meant to do in the, in the last revision, and I think we need to get, take a little more time to do that than he would like us to take. So at his request and recommendation, we're bringing to you an ordinance that just restores that general penalty.
Any questions from council? All right, this is the first reading, so I think we're all prepared to bring it back for second and final. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Clerk, please read Ordinance Number 684 by title only.
Ordinance Number 684, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, amending Chapter 1.1, or adding Chapter 1.10 general penalty to the Cottonwood Municipal Code. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, next is Item 6, request from the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition for a temporary waiver of the automatic fire sprinkler requirement for the operation of an overnight homeless shelter.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Scott Ellis, Community Development Director. We're here tonight to look at the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition's request for a waiver on the fire sprinkler requirements. Give you a little bit of background, they approached us a couple months back. Right now, they have a conditional use permit to operate out of their location on Main Street to provide day services for the homeless and emergency overnight shelter when the temperature is forecast. temperature is forecast to be under 35 degrees. In 2018, council did grant a waiver for that emergency shelter. The coalition came to us a couple months ago asking to expand that due to the COVID pandemic. It required a modification for their conditional use permit by the planning commission. They did approve that, however, I do want to clarify that it was only for the use itself. It's not anything to do with the fire code. They don't have that ability to dictate that, to provide a waiver or anything. One of their stipulations was it's only valid, that modification is only valid if the council does waive that. Otherwise, if not, they would have to meet those fire code requirements. They did give till January 25th of 2021 for the coalition to come back to renew that conditional use permit expansion and they'll revise it at that time. We do have, I believe we do have a member of the coalition here to speak also. We have our fire chief and fire marshal to give input as well.
All right, very good. Ms. Corbin?
Yep, so I think next we probably should hear from the fire chief. So this comes with a pretty neutral from city administration. We have, we understand why it was approved, we understand the need, but I have significant concerns given that my fire chief can't recommend this waiver. And so you won't get this very often where we're not 100% united on this. I understand the need. This is really council's decision, but I wanted to make sure you heard from both sides. Again, someone is here from the homeless coalition to kind of tell you where they're at and why they're asking because it really has to do with the ownership of the building and the ability to permanently have a permanent location that has permanent sprinklers. And council has waived this requirement before for them. So council clearly has, you know, given the waiver. But I think it's important that you hear directly from the fire chief and then I recommend that you guys hear from the applicant.
Let's go ahead then, have Chief Kirkendall present to council, please.
Mr. Mayor, it looked like Councilmember Henry might have had a question.
I'm sorry.
I did just have a question for staff or maybe our city manager and just the February 28th, that, that date, what was that tied to?
That was tied to them going in front of P&amp;Z. So P&amp;Z gave them a six-month extension to January 25th and we wanted to make sure we had enough time to review that recommendation and come back to council in February. It was just a round number to give us time.
Good evening, mayor and council. I am Mike Kirkendall, city's fire chief for the moment. This is a very strange situation to be in, but I've been here before and some of you on the council know. We as the fire department certainly understand the plight of the homeless. We deal with the homeless on a regular basis as part of our job. And we, we certainly understand the idea of trying to get the homeless off of the streets at night and in a place for them to stay and do those things. However, when this came up before and it was for a waiver for the cold weather shelter when it was under 35 degrees, we made it clear at that time that yes, because of the code required and our requirements that are put upon us as guardians of life and safety for our community, that the codes that we have and have been adopted by this council, including our sprinkler ordinances and those, were put in place to save lives and property, both. They provide, the sprinkler ordinance provides, essentially, we've used this terminology before, it's like having 24-hour firemen on in a building and it provides that. We certainly understand, again, as I said, the desire of the homeless coalition to do this, but we have to oppose this because, again, our first concern is for life and safety. It was a little, when the, when the last time that this came before you, while we did oppose it, we had worked with the homeless coalition to come up with what we thought might be some reasonable give and take on this thing while we were still opposed to not to waiving the sprinkler ordinance. By putting some other things in place, we did it. We also understood at that time that we were weighing out the fire safety sprinkler and the threat of death, injury and damage to the building by fire against people being exposed to the elements. And at that 35 degrees, certainly that you can weigh out that there would be people who could lose their lives because they're out in that temperature. So we were kind of comparing, I hate to say it, apples to apples, to some extent, we're looking at what's the best service for this. We feel that in this situation, this doesn't really apply. Having read the information put out by the homeless coalition, we understand they're in a position where they've received some funding and that, and we understand that this is tied to the COVID thing, but we don't see it as being the same as last time because of the temperatures and such. The safety of the people who would be indoors or outdoors, that's not, it's not the same as it was when we were looking at from the cold temperatures. We think at this point in time, our belief is that the, we have to err on the side of fire and life safety as well as consistency in the application of codes. That always concerns me when we, and when I say we, the city, including the council who makes these determinations, we adopt a code, but then we give exceptions to it. That concerns me as a fire chief because what message we're sending perhaps to the community. We believe these are important, but then sometimes we'll waive them. It's easy for me to understand that when we're talking about people who may freeze to death, it's a little bit different when our temperatures are very temperate right now, it's very nice. And to be real honest with you, even looking at it from the COVID standpoint, it seems counterintuitive when we're trying to tell people to stay apart from each other and then yet putting them in an enclosed area. And that's not to be negative, I still understand that. I'm just saying that in context of, for some of the reasoning here, that we are opposed to it. It's just counterintuitive to what we see in the fire and life safety and by bringing them in and putting them in that same place.
Rick, fire marshal, did you have anything else you wanted to share on that?
I think, well, yeah, and certainly, as Rick always tells people, and I love it what he says, the fire code, and this is true, the fire codes are written in blood. The reason why they're in fire codes is because people have been injured or died and that's when things get into the fire code. And that's how they've been built over the years. They're to provide minimum fire and life safety requirements for all buildings. Our current code would require any residential structure being constructed or any change of use where residential structure, where a building that was not residential was turned into a residential structure, would require sprinklers. And that's for life, safety for the occupants as well as to protect the building itself. Our, and as Rick was reminding me here, the only fatal fire we've had in the last 10 years was a homeless person in a 5 by 12 room that was not sprinkled. And I'm not throwing that out there, I just want to remind you that these things do happen. As much as we don't think they happen, they do happen at times. With that, I'll entertain any questions from council.
All right, council, do we have any questions for the chief?
I absolutely agree. Codes are meant to be reinforced. And two other questions. What is an NFPA 72 monitored fire alarm system?
Okay, I didn't get into that. We, that's what we have thrown out to you. An NFPA 72, that is the National Fire Protection Association, if you will, document number 72 or standard 72. That just has to do with how a fire alarm system has to be installed. It's, when we say NFPA 72 monitored fire alarm system, NFPA 72, that's the NFPA standard. 72 is the standard for fire alarm systems and that standard gives how fire alarms have to be put in. We have NFPA standards, the National Fire Protection Systems has standards for all kinds of things, including fire trucks, how you have to build a fire truck, how you have to be trained, all of these things. This just is the standard that has to do with fire alarm systems. It's so that there's a, nationally, a consistency in how fire alarms are installed and that they have to be installed by trained, competent individuals and it has to be monitored by competent people. That way, there's consistency. It doesn't do any good to put in a fire alarm system that doesn't work. And that's essentially, this is to guarantee that will be put in and it will work and provide what it needs to do.
Okay, are you more, well, you've got to be more comfortable, but are, how comfortable are you with the conditions that are placed on this?
I'll put this in context. We opposed it for the 35 degrees as such, while we understood it. But we put in what we felt were reasonable accommodation to try to get the most fire safety we could. The fire marshal had put together these requirements above the 35-degree requirements that we have in here because he had already discussed, I believe there'd been some discussion with them. A fire alarm system obviously is less expensive. A fire alarm system doesn't put out fire and it doesn't provide the protection. We hope the fire alarm systems get people out of the building sooner. When I say I'm certainly more comfortable with the provisions we put in, if council decides to approve it, we would like to see these, these, just as we went through and had all the provisions we had in the 35 degree, which still would apply. I don't want to say this is better than nothing because that's not, doesn't sound like the way I want it to sound because, but what it really means is we feel that if you're going to approve it, we would at least like to see these things. I still recommend that we do not approve it because I believe that sprinklers should be, and again, I'm back to the consistency, we require it of all other structures. I understand the situation is different and I don't want to sound like I'm anti-homeless because I'm certainly not. I just, my job is to enforce not just the ordinances, but it's also to look out for the fire and life safety of all the individuals in our community, whether they be homeless or not. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, as long as we're talking about the recommended stipulations, if that's the direction the council goes, the chief mentioned, you'll notice in the third condition, I'm sorry.
It was number one, the first condition.
In the first, right, but I'm talking about the one that captures, except for these additional overlaying stipulations, it's the second one that we bring in all the conditions we applied to the over, the cold weather shelter function. And then number one is that we talk about, this isn't just a person, it's a paid employee. That's a specific intentional recommended change, but there's no intent to change that the ratio of that awake staffing is one for every 10 people in the facility. So if there's more than 10 people, there would need to be two. And that's just reconciling the conditions that are already there for overnight shelter with these additional ones the fire folks are recommending.
I agree. You, and I was going to hit on that. When the, in the translation, getting it into the council communication, all the provisions, as Mr. Horton said, all the provisions for the 35 degree were carryover. He said, except, except, with the exceptions of the additional ones here. Number one that says at least one paid employee remain outside awake and on active fire watch at any time and a person asleep or allowed to sleep, really should have said one paid employee per 10 clients or 10 people there, the same as the 35 degree. And there's a maximum of 20, which would also apply. Essentially, if you have more than 10, they need to have two people on fire watch, one for every 10. When we took these before, the, again, these, those should carryover, it just didn't carry over well. In the council, I would ask that if council does approve this, that we do include that that is the one per 10. Any other questions from council or?
Any other questions for chief and don't go far. We may have more questions for you, so.
I'm saying it, I'm sorry.
Don't go far, we may have more questions for you.
We afterwards, yes, we'll.
All right, do we?
With that, we will step aside and let the others, homeless coalition.
Okay, and who do we have here tonight from the homeless coalition?
Good evening. Hi there. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Laura Cox. I'm a board member for the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition. Thank you for letting us be here tonight. Also with me is Rhonda Bishop. She is our executive assistant at the homeless coalition. We appreciate, more than you will ever know, how much support that you have given to the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition over the past years. We have been fortunate in receiving support from both you and members of the community. And we've been recognized for the work that we have done for the homeless. We recently received a pretty substantial amount of money from the state of Arizona. And one of the reasons that we received those funds was because the city of Cottonwood was recognized as a place where the homeless were underserved. We are excited that we can reverse that trend. We've got a new place of operation, we have a new executive director, and as I heard mentioned earlier, we've hired six people pending your decision tonight to opt so that we can operate our overnight shelter on a regular basis. I mean, six people, they'll be up all night. What else can I say? We've not really requested any other changes. We'd like to continue to operate the way you allowed us to do when we first received the conditional use permit. We are not changing our operation. We do have those six employees. But we've got the funds now to keep people off the street, to keep them from getting roused out of their camping spots all over the city of Cottonwood. We've got that place. It's not a permanent situation, it's conditional. When we, and our hope really, is to embark on a huge fundraising campaign so that we can raise the funds to purchase the building where we are. That's our goal. But it's temporary right now. We're working on a lease. And quite frankly, for us to spend $100,000 installing a sprinkler system just doesn't make a lot of sense for us right now. We've complied with everything else that the city has asked for. We're prepared to bring people in out of these 110-degree days and 90-degree evenings. We're there. We just ask for a little bit more time until we can comply with every single line in your codes. We'll dot every I and cross every T, but we just need a little more time. If you have any more questions for me specifically, if they're technical in nature, I do have Rhonda here to answer those questions. But thank you for your time, thanks to planning and zoning, and of course, thanks to the fire department who's made their review. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Any questions from?
I do have one question kind of burning in the back of my mind. I understand that this is a temporary measure here, but when I was on the board of the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition, the vision was not to open up an over, you know, a homeless shelter with overnight all the time. So is that vision changing is kind of what I'm curious about.
I think that as we have grown from just kind of a little grassroots organization, we've gotten people with creative minds and great vision for what this can be. I mean, we're not even thinking about calling it a homeless coalition anymore. It's going to become the transition, transition center because we think that everybody's got some value and if we can move them off the streets and into some kind of productive or more comfortable or safer environment, then that's where we're going. So we have changed. We're not just a little 10 by 12 room anymore.
Well, it's a very exciting change. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Ms. Cox?
Do you feel this is a life and death situation for these 10 up to 20 people? Yes, I do. In what way? All right, and I may ask Rhonda to step in here too. Okay, so we're faced, we do have health and safety procedures as far as keeping people safe from COVID. I mean, we're very conscious of that. So that's one thing. We're getting people off the street and into a safe environment where they can wash, wash their face and hands and do all of those kind of things. So that's one thing. Being outside when it's 115 degrees and you have no shelter or no shade and you're being asked to move from one place to another is not a, not a place where you want to be. I think that's, ought to be a concern to us. Try living on the street, it's not easy. And I think it is unhelpful, un, sorry, unhealthy and not safe.
So what measures do you have in place then to prevent the transmission of COVID? And what have you guys done in the beginning? And what have you guys done in the beginning to assist with that?
Every person that comes into the shelter tries to wash their hands and sanitize prior to touching the pen or anything else. Constantly reminding them to wash their hands, encouraging them to stay away. But to your question, one of the things that I've noticed in my time there is this is a very close-knit community. One person gets sick, they will all be sick. If one person gets sick, they will all be sick. And if we can pick them off right at the door when we take their temperature and say, you know what, you've got a fever, let's drive you to the hospital. There's a chance that it won't spread through the community because the whole community will be ill. And we have pregnant moms, we have infants, we have young children that could possibly be exposed. If we're there and we're able to service more people, we will better be able to keep a handle on it. Right now, if we see 20 people during the day and 20 at night, those 20 are not often repeated. Sometimes they are, but more often than not, up to 10, 10 to 15 of them are different people. So we're actually seeing a greater number because we do have the working homeless that are employed and we don't see them during the day.
And in terms of your overnight shelter, how do you plan then? Are you going to separate the cots to keep folks distanced one from the other? Is that?
Yes. When we did some training with staff this week, we were able to get them adequately spaced so there's room for the 20 cots to be separate.
Any other questions for Ms. Bishop or Cox?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a clarifying question? Because I want to make sure. So there are policies and procedures in if someone, this facility, overnight facility will not be used for COVID. So if you have COVID or are sick, you would not be allowed to use a facility. We have a different set of procedures. We have other ways to help with those. So part of what the chief was saying, the money is related to COVID grant that they got from the state. Awesome. But it's, the overnight isn't to assist with COVID. We've been fortunate, we really, I hate to say it out loud, we've been very fortunate. They've done a good job. There's not been an outbreak in the homeless population here in the city of Cottonwood or the Verde Valley. Very different than Flagstaff. Flagstaff early on had significant outbreaks. They had to rent hotels to house some of their homeless population for a long period of time to get that back under control. We've been very fortunate here and not had that significant outbreak. They've done a good job at the daytime facility to help keep things clean. They've checked temperatures. They do all the right things during the day. But the night shelter is not for COVID.
Thank you.
All right. Before I say anything, I just want to say I do serve on the homeless coalition board. It's not paid, which is a good thing because I may be one of the least contributing members of the board with a lot of other commitments, but I have served on the board since its formation and, but in speaking with the attorney, there isn't, there isn't a conflict in that. So that being said, I supported the request when it was made last time. I think we were concerned about, of course, folks being exposed to the elements and in my mind at that time, you know, the risk of being without shelter, the risk of sleeping in a facility without fire sprinkler was much less than the risk in my mind of sleeping out in the elements. And I think, again, with this new proposal of expanding your services, I think you've also expanded the ability to closely monitor by fire watch those people who would be in the facility, which is not sprinkled. I think that's, that's really critical in maintaining safety of those folks inside. So I think that, you know, I don't frankly see this as being much different. I wholeheartedly stand by our fire sprinkler ordinance. I think it's important. I think that we can, we can point to ways that that has positively impacted our residents. I think there are instances, and I think this is one of them, when we need to look at, you know, take a step back and kind of look at the bigger picture and perhaps waive those ordinances when it's necessary. I think in my mind at least, this is, this is one of those times. Vice Mayor.
So just a question and comment. No matter which way this goes, they're still going to have the ability to shelter people when it gets below 35 degrees?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. So I would agree with that. I think the risk of death, freezing to death at that time and in those conditions is probably greater than the risk of a fire. I do know, and so I think somebody said earlier, there have been two deaths in the recent past, homeless people setting themselves on, no, two instances of homeless people setting themselves on fire. I actually happen to know Johan. He's the one that died in the shed. He was kind of a fixture around here for quite some time. But it's commendable what you're trying to do. I'm going to, I'm going to vote my conscience and I'm going to go with our public safety professionals in that if something were to happen, I don't want that on my conscience.
Yeah, I would concur with Vice Mayor Michaels. I'm concerned in the event there is a fire with 20 people in the building and these being homeless people in different degrees of consciousness, they would be able to escape without the fire sprinklers. In the event of a death, I would ask the city attorney, what is the city's responsibility if we waive the fire code? Don't we accept some responsibility?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Hulse, I wouldn't want to hazard a prediction as to what the city's liability exposure would be, but certainly there is a record now of your fire chief's concerns.
Thank you. I would tend to go along with the vice mayor that if we violate the code and something happens, then liability-wise is, as interested in people are ensuing, especially government, I can see where we could be in for a multimillion-dollar lawsuit because we didn't follow the fire code. And I would rather err on the side of caution than expose the city to any degree of possibility.
Any other council members? Comments? Are we ready for, I'll hazard a motion here, if I may. Oh, there's a point I was going to make. The, and I understand exactly where the fire chief's coming from and the other council members that agree. But I think I'd be much less hesitant too to approve this or stand by the coalition if I didn't know their track record. And I think when this was first proposed, the board took it very seriously and worked in great, you know, hand in hand with the fire department, making sure that, you know, fire watch was legitimate, that it was implemented to the best of their ability and there weren't any incidents. And again, when COVID first came, I remember we did get together as a board and discussed, you know, what are we going to do to make sure that the users of the facility are going to be safe and that we don't have any transmission throughout the community, the homeless community? So I think, you know, they've, this board has proven itself, which makes me much more comfortable in standing by this. So like I said, I'll lob a motion and we'll see where this lands. If I can get my computer to cooperate here. So I would move to approve the, I would move to waive the ordinance. Gosh, I'm sorry, I'm really doing a worse job with this than that proclamation I read earlier. Help me out, somebody. I would move that we waive the, which ordinance is it? Mr. Horton, can you help me?
It, in your communication form, it starts with, "I move to approve the requests from the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition to temporarily waive the fire code requirement that any structure that is used as an overnight shelter be equipped with an automatic fire sprinkler system, subject to the following conditions." I think you can either read those conditions into the record. I would note that condition one, the staff recommendation, is that that be at a ratio of one active alert paid fire watch person for every 10 occupants. If you're like me, I'd be happy to read the conditions or you can incorporate them as part of your motion.
No, I'll incorporate them, thanks. And I see those conditions. I just was trying to figure out which ordinance. Okay, so I would move that we, we. Boy, I'm sorry. I'm just mucking this up real bad, aren't I?
While you're formulating that, I did have a question. I was expecting to hear something from the coalition tonight about whether or not their house is in order. And I didn't hear anything tonight. So I do have some concern that there are some concerns internally at the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition with internal oversight. And now the coalition is asking the city to waive our code where apparently they don't have their house in order. So I don't know if anybody would care to give additional information into that situation.
Ms. Cox or Ms. Bishop, would you like to respond to Councilmember Henry's question?
Mayor, council members, council member, is it Henry? Yes. I'm not sure where you heard that from. We have a very strong board. We're working hard to move forward and I think we're very comfortable with where we are and what's going on in the organization. Thank you.
You do. Go ahead.
I don't have anything.
You do have a new executive director, as you mentioned. How long has that person been involved? Are they ready to take over?
I'm sorry.
Effectively?
All right. We've just had this great, terrific, creative individual, hardworking with us, Matthew Martin. He's been with us since January. We couldn't be more excited about the ideas that he has brought to the organization. We've recently hired, and he started in January, my apologies, Rhonda. When did you start? Just, just in August. And then we've got these, we continue to have volunteers from the community and we've also got six people waiting in line to become our evening workers.
Mr. Mayor, if I can ask, without prodding too much, we've been informed that one of your employees was put on admin leave? I don't want to talk out of school or I don't know what's appropriate here, but we've just been told that there's an issue in the organization.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Corbin, I'm not comfortable discussing internal deliberations of the board in this public setting.
That's fair.
Nothing has been resolved.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, I'll take a fourth stab at this. So I would move that we waive the sprinkler ordinance in this instance for the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition to operate its overnight shelter with the following exceptions, exemptions. That one, at least one paid employee remain on site, awake and on active fire watch at any time, that any person is sleeping or allowed to be asleep at the shelter. Two, that except is modified by the waiver, the facility shall comply with all relevant provisions of Ordinance 637 for the operation of overnight shelters without fire sprinklers. Item three, that the shelter install an NFPA 72 monitored fire alarm system prior to any overnight use. Item four, that except is provided by this waiver, the facility shall conform to all applicable provisions of the 2018 International Fire and Building Code as adopted. And item five, that the waiver expire at midnight on February 28th, 2021. That's the motion. Without a second.
Could I add something to that proposed motion that would make me more comfortable with it?
Motion's on the table and it's up for discussion.
So I think we want to go back to number one and add in that ratio of one paid staff awake per 10 occupants for every overnight that they do. I think that's the piece that I didn't hear the mayor say.
I think that's embedded in Ordinance 637. Is that correct?
I think, if you don't object, I think as you read the other requirements that are imported in, that would be it. And I think what the fire department and I'm recommendation, and I'm recommending is that, you know, you make that part of the record of your motion so there, it's perfectly clear that that requirement for the awake, and I'm sorry, I'm going to back up and explain the context for this. This requirement for fire watch is in the earlier ordinance. The new, the improvement, the change is that this not just be a volunteer, that this be paid staff. I think there's an accountability component to that. So you're just bringing that forward, but you're not changing anything about the ratio. The ratio is in the original waiver.
Would you like me to amend one, just to make it clear that?
I would be much more comfortable if it was amended, please.
Okay. That at least one paid employee remain on site per 10 overnight residents, awake and on active fire watch at any time, that any person is sleeping or allowed to be asleep in the shelter.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion by the mayor, Councilmember Narin seconded it, and the roll call vote, please, sir.
Councilmember Henry?
No.
Councilmember Hulse?
No.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
No.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
No.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes.
And motion failed.
Okay, very good. Thank you, council. Thank you, thank you, staff. Thanks to the coalition as well. All right. And I'm so sorry, I just botched up that motion so bad. Apparently, it's contagious too. Sorry, Steve. All right. Next is claims and adjustments. I would move that we pay the claims.
Second.
All right, mayor, made the motion. Councilmember Henry seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then next on the agenda is review and possible legal action to extend the city manager's employment contract pursuant to Arizona Vice Statute 38-431.03A1. The council may vote to convene in executive session to review the employment of the city manager, subject to the city manager's right to compel the council to discuss the matter in open meeting. The council may also receive legal advice and give council direction regarding the negotiation of a new works in a contract with the city manager. We discussed, I believe you'd prefer to be in executive session on this item. So I would then move that we go into executive session.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We're in executive session. Ms. Consorte, I'll have to, I'll email you and I'm sorry that I did sooner, but yeah, we won't be able to discuss this. I'll get with you tomorrow.